By Executive Order N 2920 issued on March 18, 2020, NMUSD Board Meetings will be closed to the public. Spanish interpretation is available via the Zoom link. Roll call, please.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Trustee Barto.
Here.
Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Ursula.
Here.
And Trustee Wagen. Mr. Lee Sung.
Here.
Thank you.
Community input on closed session agenda items. We did not receive any comment cards, so we will not read the readout. And we will now go into closed session. All board members, please log out of the webinar and enter the closed session meeting. Thank you. We will return at 6:00 PM for our regular session. Good evening, everyone. At 6:00 PM, we will start our regular meeting with an opening ceremonies and moment of reflection and pledge to the flag. And I'm going to have a student board member use the pledge to the flag. Troy, would you like to come up? But everyone, please rise.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. It's a real treat, and we have some energy in the room today because we have our student board members who have joined us for just a final farewell. And they have not attended one meeting in person, so it's nice to have them in the board. Thank you all. I'm sorry. Thank you all for being here. Adoption of the agenda. Have a motion.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second. Moved by Trustee Barto, seconded by Trustee Crane. Any comments on that, or everybody's okay with it? Okay.
Oh, I would like to pull 17B1 to discussion action as it's a curriculum item and per board policy, all curriculum items, I believe.
17B1?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moved by Trustee Barto, seconded by Trustee Crane. We will move 17B1 at the end of discussion action. I didn't catch that.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursula.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
And adoption of the minutes from 5:1821, 5:2521, and 6:321.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Barto. Roll call.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursula.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
And I just have one announcement that was made referring back to closed session. In closed session, the board took action to release and non-reelect four temporary certificated employees pursuant to Ed. Code Section 44954 effective at the end of 2020-2021 school year and directed the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows: yes, seven; no, zero. Okay, we're moving on to item 10, and I will turn that over to Superintendent Lee Sung.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I have the honor to announce that we are introducing two new leaders to our leadership team here. I will be introducing Carrie Torres, and then I believe Sarah Jacom will be introducing our new Director of Special Education. So I'm going to ask Carrie Torres to come up to the podium as I say some nice words about her and why she is our new Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. So first of all, a little background. A little closer.
There you go.
She's better. Okay. All right. So first, a little bit of background about Carrie Torres. First of all, she comes to us from Brea-Holanda Unified School District. She is the Assistant Superintendent of Education Services at Brea right now. But prior to that, she served as the Executive Director of Secondary Education with the Orange Unified School District. And prior to that, a lot of site experience as a principal in the Orange Unified School District, assistant principal at a high school in Downey, a vice principal at a middle school in Downey. And she started her career as a science teacher also in Downey. So very extensive career, but I will tell you, you know, through the hiring process and through doing our research to select her, she has done so many things in her career. And so we are just very, very pleased to have our newest leader join us here as the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. So Carrie Torres, welcome, and I want to formally introduce you to the board.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, and I just really do appreciate this opportunity to serve the greater Newport-Costa Mesa area. And I hope that all of my colorful experiences over my career will yield great results for the community here. So just thank you so much and very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to let you know, she will be officially starting with the district as of July 1, and we are anxiously awaiting.
You can't underestimate that anxiously awaiting.
Anxiously awaiting. Okay, and now Dr. Jacom will introduce her next leader.
Good evening. I have been anxiously awaiting this for a very long time. So it is my honor and pleasure to welcome Juliana Salvao as the Director of Special Education/Salpa. And I think she's on Zoom somewhere, so I'm not sure where she is. But what I'd like to explain to you is, you may recall that, there she is, hi Juliana, that sometimes last names are hard to pronounce. So when you all learned my last name, I gave you a mnemonic to remember it, which is Rockham Sockham Jockham. And so with Juliana, sometimes when you see it in print, it's hard to know how to pronounce it. So the mnemonic that she has is for How Now Brown Cow Sal Vow. So that's how you can remember how to pronounce her name. So Juliana comes to us most recently from Santa Anna Unified, where she was an Executive Director in Special Education over there, handling a lot of their due process, their litigation, and all kinds of other pieces over there. The interesting thing is that Santa Anna Unified is also a single district Salpa. And so as she comes over here and we're looking at her taking not only our alternative dispute resolution and due process, but also taking on some increasing Salpa responsibilities, she's in good standing from coming from that. So just so you know, she's been described by her colleagues as approachable, collaborative. She has strong interpersonal communication skills. And she's taught kindergarten through 12th grade in both general education and special education. So she has a well-rounded experience coming to us. So she's already started, and we just are very thrilled to welcome Juliana to Newport Mesa.
So I think that's my cue. I hope everybody can hear me. I am so excited to be here. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Board President Yelsey, Board Members, Superintendent Lee Sung, and community members. I am extremely excited for this opportunity, and I have had the best time the last two weeks getting to know the district. And I look forward to continuing the work that has already been worked on before me and really move the work forward to help benefit all of our students to make sure that we're providing all the services that we can. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, and we look forward to meeting you in person and having you here as well. Okay, we have comments throughout the meeting, and we do have one on introduction of new staff. So Trustee Metoyer, would you read the statements for us?
And we're doing just the agendized statements right now, or do I read them both? They're actually the same.
Yes.
Or close. Speakers wishing to address the board on agendized items have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website by 11:00 AM today, Tuesday, June 15, 2021. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another purpose. Person, we will take public comments as we approach the items on the agenda.
Okay, so we do have one speaker for item 10, and that is Rory Sewula. So Mrs. Fish, can you bring him up?
Hello. So I would like to talk about... Can you hear me?
You have three minutes. Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Hello, I am Rory Sewula. I go to Children's Elementary, and I have been experiencing some issues with disability rights. People should be having the rights that should be equal to every person in the whole entire school district. No matter which school you are in, you should have the correct rights in the same bathroom and also in the same restroom and with the same equality. I've also been experiencing stuff that has been not accessible for disability rights. Please fix this. No matter if you were in a wheelchair, you wouldn't know how it feels to your child. If they get anxiety issues, they get very bad issues. It will make their children feel very annoyed, like very annoyed and uncomfortable, and they don't want to go to school. And people need a good education. So if you don't do that, how can people have a good education when they can't even go to school? They're annoyed about all the accessibility problems. So I'm trying to fight for that, and I don't want my child to feel like they can't do things because they can't do stuff. There's not a right accessibility. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. President Yelsey, back to you. She said, pass it back to you.
Right. And now we'll move on to item 11, which we are all really excited about right here up at the board. Our Student Board Member Final Reports and Recognition. And we'll start with Paulina Vasquez from Early College High School.
Hi, everyone. So this meeting's topic is basically kind of reflecting on this year as a student board member and just, I mean, as a senior, saying goodbye. So I've been in the district for about 13 years, kindergarten to my senior year, it just wrapped up. And I just wanted to say thank you for granting me this opportunity of being a student board member. Again, like last time, I said, I got to know all of you, and I got to kind of learn how the district works and how it just functions with every single school. And honestly, it's been a great learning opportunity. And I mean, right now, you're seeing me just kind of speaking in public. It's obviously like, it's something pretty big for me because I don't really speak a lot in public, so this is kind of a great opportunity again. And just again, thank you for a great year, and thank you for everything that you guys have helped for the past 13 years for me especially. So it's been great being a student board member. Thank you.
Can Paulina tell us where she's going?
Thank you.
Paulina, can you tell us where your next plan?
Oh, yeah. So next fall, I'm going to UC San Diego, and I'm majoring in speech and language sciences.
Next, we have Maddie McNamara from Back Bay High School.
Hi. Being a student board member helped me understand what it's like in the real world. I am very thankful I got this opportunity to be a part of such a big learning experience. The board helped me learn what real leadership is. As a student board member, you have to be able to represent your school and their wishes in a professional manner. Having the student board member position also teaches you how the real world works in a work environment. You learn how to be professional in a way you speak and actions that you take. Being a student board member was a privilege, and I'm very thankful for it. I'm thankful for all the new skills I learned and the people I have met. All in all, being a student board member was an enjoyable experience, and I would definitely recommend it for other students. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And your plans are? Thank you.
I'm going to go to OCC for two years to save money, and then I'm going to transfer to a four-year university for my bachelor's degree.
Excellent plan. President Yelsey. Two of our student board members were also the character award winners. I don't know if they've made it to the lobby to see their banners, but since they're here, they might want to.
Yes. When you leave, go out through the lobby. Next, we have Troy Saboda from Corona Del Mar High School.
Hello. All right. My name is Troy Saboda. This is probably my final time representing CDM. And I just want to thank the school board, all of you have through this year. It's been challenging, but you guys really helped us get through it, and I'm really happy for that on behalf of everyone at CDM and the district. And I would like to also thank Mr. Lee Sung and the executive cabinet for also helping us get through this year. It's been incredibly challenging, and again, I can't thank you guys enough. I just want to say, you know, I've been in the district for 13 years, and Newport Mesa has given me more than I can imagine. And it's been a great experience, and there's nothing I would change about it. That's all I have to say. I will be attending UC Berkeley this fall to study math and physics, and that's all I got. So thank you.
Thank you. You got a lot. And next, we have Elizabeth Libby from the Cloud Campus.
Which is here. Okay. There you go. So if I told myself a year ago that I would be here presenting, I wouldn't have believed myself. Cloud Campus was just being developed. As a school, we began. As an ASB, we created our mascot, choosing our colors, and establishing clubs. During this time, I was approached to be the student board member for Cloud Campus. Although I was excited to fulfill this role, I knew that I would face many challenges as a student of a fully, a new, fully virtual school. With each report I presented, I made sure to conduct a survey that included as many perspectives as possible and represented Cloud Campus students as a whole. Building an entire new campus with a fully virtual curriculum was no easy feat. I would like to thank Dr. Shaka, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Ramatullah, the teachers, the staff, the students, and the parents that helped make this school such a success. Cloud Campus was an option for students like myself that felt unsafe returning to the brick and mortar schools due to COVID-19 or for other reasons. It was truly the best choice for me, as later in the year, my mom was diagnosed with cancer, which makes her immunocompromised. And the treatment she receives makes her even more immunocompromised. The treatment, she would have never been able to attend my graduation there. She would have never been able to attend my graduation if there hadn't been Cloud Campus. The groups of students that agreed to choose Cloud Campus did make sacrifices, but they gained a new community built on rising from the ashes, as phoenixes do. I attended the last staff meeting of the year and heard all the stories from the staff and the teachers. I could tell how much of a positive impact that Cloud Campus has made on everyone. I would like to thank the board for granting me this position as a student board member. It's been an honor and a privilege to represent Cloud Campus and to be a part of the NMUSD School Board. I'd like to thank Ms. Yelsey, Ms. Barto, and Russ Lee Sung, and all of the other student board members for pushing me as a student leader. I'm excited to attend OCC this fall, and hopefully will be a part of leadership there, something I would have never even considered if it hadn't been for this experience. Thank you so much.
And next, we will have Brittany Ebrugeni.
I would just like to say how much of a pleasure and honor it has been to serve as our student board member for the Eagle community. Other than just the leadership skills or communication or other skills that I have learned and gained throughout this experience, I think that the biggest thing that I gained was my sense of community. Through not only conducting surveys and forms, but being there in person, hand in hand with my fellow Eagles, and talking about the real problems and pressures of our society and our school, really touched me and allowed me to gain a sense of perspective that I would have never experienced had it not been for this position. I would like to thank the trustees, Mr. Lee Sung, and our honored guests for this opportunity. And it has been such a privilege and honor for me that I think that will be carried on for me for the rest of my life. So I'd like to thank you.
Thank you. And what are your plans for next year?
I will be attending UCI and majoring in biology, hopefully to aspire a medical career.
And next, we have Bailey Bogard from Newport Harbor High School.
Hello, everyone. I am Bailey Bogard, and today is my last day representing Newport Harbor High School. I do, of course, we've heard the words "thank you" a lot, and I genuinely do want to say thank you one more time. Thank you for giving me a sense of purpose over my last two years at high school. I was, I am honestly privileged. I was able to serve as a school board rep for two years. That's a position, and it's a privilege to have half of my high school career being spent in somewhere so powerful. This district is an extremely powerful place. And I was going to say that seeing the transition from a year where we had fully in-person spirited classes and spirited academia to a year on Zoom, I was able to see the transition of spirit and everything with the district as well, and nothing really changed. The effort was still there. You guys pushed through, and it was honestly amazing to see how much you care for our students and for our district as a whole. And I do want to say that this year, having a full graduation, having all this spirit back, I know that our freshmen, sophomores, and current juniors now, you know, a year ahead, they have all this spirit here, and I just don't want to see that lost. And I know you guys will do an amazing job of keeping that and gaining that. So thank you so much again, and I cannot wait to see how next year goes. So thank you. And next year, I will be attending George Washington University to major in political science and minor in criminal justice. So thank you.
And then we do have one more person who's not with us tonight. He was not feeling well and thought best to stay home, but he's on Zoom with us. So Luca Gorgich Peely, can we pull him up?
Hello, Superintendent Lee Sung, President Yelsey, board trustees, and honored guests. It is truly unfortunate that I'm not able to be present in person today, but as you can tell, I'm a little bit sick. I would like to address one more point before I move on to talking about the end of my term and my experience as a student board member, and that is the in-person graduation. The in-person graduation ceremony at Costa Mesa High School was one that the class of 2020 on will truly remember. Maintaining social distancing guidelines, it was a major success with several speakers present and felt like going back to normal with a proper procession and a traditional walk down the street. As a graduate of Costa Mesa High School, I am proud of our school and district for being able to arrange this event, and thank you on behalf of our whole student body for that. Now, as the school year has ended, so has my term as a student board member. When I started, I was anxious. I wanted to make sure I do a proper job as a student board representative for my school. Putting in the work and effort, I realized how truly difficult it is to work for a school board and ensure quality of education for multiple schools and thousands of students as well as maintaining the satisfaction levels for all the other people in it. I'm thankful for this program because it taught me to see things how they're not so simple as they truly seem to be. And it taught me what being truly responsible means, meaning putting a lot of time into your job and making sure it gets done right without any excuses. I can only hope that this program continues in the future and educates numerous students about the true nature of responsibility. Thank you for this amazing opportunity, Newport Mesa Unified School District, and for making this last school year as good as it could have been. And next year, I'm planning to attend UCLA to study molecular biology for four years and hopefully get into biotechnology and genetic therapy.
And Luca, we do have a certificate for you, and I've already mentioned to you that when you are feeling better, at least some of us, maybe all of us, if we can get the schedules together, will be here at the district to hand it to you in person with a few other things that we have for you. And again, I want to thank all the student board members. You know, you all got up here and said what this program did for you, but what you did for us was equally as important. And to have the voice of the students at every single school, especially during this past year, and this was our inaugural year of doing this, was really just so helpful to everything in decision-making and our guidance. So we also appreciate that. Trustee Barto, if you'd like to.
I just want to say how much I'm going to miss working with each and every one of you and how much I treasure your voices and the different things I heard. This was such an interesting year to have this program be in its first year, and I'm so glad that we had it for this year especially. We have never had this many changes in the way education happens in one school year. And to be able to hear from you students when something was working, when something wasn't working, your impressions along the way has been so meaningful. And as we go into the second year of this program, I hope that some of our new board members can reach out to you and just hope that you can realize what an inspiration you've been to your fellow students. I keep hearing from the students who have applied. When I ask them, why did they apply, and all of them say, oh, I was so inspired by Troy. I was so inspired by Bailey. I was inspired by Brittany. I was inspired by Paulina and Elizabeth. All of you have inspired more students than you can possibly know, and that's reflected in all of the interviews that we did to place the new student board members for us next year. So thank you so much, and best wishes on your way, and I'm sure that you guys will do amazing things.
Thank you all. And it was so fun having you here in person with us.
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to item 12, Harbor Council PTA Report.
Good evening, super-
Good evening Superintendent Lee Sung, President Yelsey, Board Members, Honored Guests. I'm happy to report that the PTA is moving forward. We are still looking for a few positions to fill, but for the most part, the majority of our schools have their officers in place for next year. They're working on getting their rosters together, finishing up the financials for the end of the year so that the audits can be completed and that we can move on to getting our taxes done, et cetera. And I just wanted to give a quick shout out. Thank you to our community facilitators. They are such an asset to our PTAs, and I assume our other schools as well. But the ones that I have worked with have just gone above and beyond to help our PTA leaders be a bridge for the ones that have the language barrier and just helping them understand they meet with me and we meet together. And I just want to commend all of them for the great work that they're doing for our school district. And I also wanted to just state real quick that I was very impressed with the Superintendent Search. I've attended all the open meetings when the consultants were hired and have heard from Dennis and Peggy talking to the board on the whole process. I've seen the Superintendent Search webpage. I found it to be very easy to follow along. If I was looking for something, seeing the timeline, it was all very easy to understand and find. And I just wanted to thank the board for what seems to be a very good leadership associates with the consultants, Dennis and Peggy. And so, thank you to all of you. I know we're going to miss Russell, but it sounds like we have a really good plan in place for finding our next leader. So, thank you. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Lisa, and have a nice summer. And really, you should be thanking Annette Franco for the webpage on the Superintendent Search. She has done a great job of putting that together and is very intent on making sure it's up to date. She calls me every day. Do we have new information, which is great? So we're looking forward to keeping the public informed as we move along.
Thank you for that information. Annette, thank you very much.
I cannot see online. Do we have someone from NMFT here?
Yes, I'm here.
Tamara is here. Okay.
I'm here. Good evening, School Board Trustees and Honored Guests. As we celebrate the beginning of summer, I want to acknowledge the work of our certified classified and administrative staff. Our staff have gone over and beyond their work duties to not only teach and work in their daily jobs, but to do the extra work needed in order to plan for not just one, but three transitions. Not only was the safety of our community at the forefront of our minds, we were focused on doing our jobs and added duties to give our students a quality and safe education. This year is a testament to what can be accomplished when administration and employees work together. Throughout the year, the administration was able to work within NMFT with safety protocols, curriculum needs, and medical needs of our members. We have been able to problem solve issues that may arise at the site level and were able to find agreement on issues on workload and safety. Some colleagues will rest this summer. Others will work during the summer, during summer school and other activities. Regardless of what we were doing this summer, they feel, they should feel pride, proud in knowing that they put their best foot forward and did the best that they could this year. Bravo to the staff at NMUSD for surviving and working through such an incredibly challenging year. I wish you rest during this transition as we approach fall. Thank you for your public service. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara. And is Pam Saunders here?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, President Yelsey, Board, Superintendent Lee Sung, Cabinet, and Guests. Thank you for this opportunity from CSEA. First and foremost, we'd like to thank all of our classified employees throughout the district for all their hard work and dedication during the pandemic. Our positive impact is not yet done. CSEA has been an integral part in getting us where we are today and will continue to help to lead the way to educational normalcy. CSEA celebrated Classified School Employees Week in May with gift cards for all CSEA members donated from Chick-fil-A. CSEA is preparing for our 95th Annual Conference virtually, July 25th through 29th. Twelve delegates will be attending this year. We would like to continue the safety measures of all students and staff at schools and work sites. CSEA wants to ensure that classified members' needs and concerns are still addressed. We'd like to remind everyone to continue to wear a mask and social distance. Please stay safe during the upcoming July 4th holiday weekend. Again, thank you again for this opportunity from CSEA Chapter 18.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
And next, we'll move on to item 13, which is Report on Career Technical Education. Is Michael Vossen on?
Yes.
I am here.
There he is.
Mr. Vossen.
Well, we had a wonderful collaboration between our office, the Office of College and Career Education, and our Public Information Office. And the video you're about to see is pretty self-explanatory with respect to, you know, what our district has achieved in the evolution of CTE. And I have to say, of course, I'm very proud of it. But I really want to do a shout out also to the Public Information Office for District. I know you know how wonderful Annette and Adriana are, but I have to tell you how much fun this video was to work on with them and to collaborate on. They were, it was a back and forth brainstorming, just a lot of fun and openness to ideas. And we so enjoy working with, I know they're known as the A Team, and they really are, just a terrific group. So Adriana, Annette, thank you so much for helping us put this video together. And I think Adriana is going to show it to you now.
Career technical education, known as CTE, is a different way of looking at the high school experience. With nine different CTE pathways offered in our schools, there's a lot a student can do. CTE is all about making elective choices work for students in an exciting and meaningful way.
Having students explore their interests early on really helps the students figure out what career they're looking for. We have so many students that are involved in post-secondary education that really have no idea what it is that they're pursuing, so why not give them a leg up in high school?
Whether it's technology or craftsmanship, CTE gives students an opportunity to work with industry equipment in real-world situations. You don't just read about artificial intelligence in our engineering pathway. You can program your own robot. Or maybe design and build a boat using a 3D printer and mill to create parts.
This is a hands-on class. In the description, we talk about how you're going to learn how to use computer-aided design to then be able to use in-class to actually design your own products and prototypes that you could then take home. You know, the innovation part of it and the creativity that you get to put forth. Like, that's where we really get to see some cool things happen.
What surprises me the most is how hands-on it is. It's a really group effort to do all the projects we do in here. A lot of courses are just bookwork and theoretical work like that. But here, you really get to get your hands dirty and be a part of something.
For the art and design lovers, harness your creativity in the media arts pathway and become Adobe certified, all while in high school. Or get behind the camera and be part of a film crew in production and managerial arts.
They see there's a goal beyond just general education. There's something meaningful behind what they're learning and it's important. It's like, oh, wow, I see people using this right now.
It's definitely the CTE pathway that I will blame for making me so passionate about film. And the communication aspect was really key because I tended to be a little bit on the shy side and it really helped me open up.
Have a passion for the hospitality industry? As part of the food service and hospitality pathway, you will tour restaurants and hotels to learn from chefs and hospitality managers with opportunities to compete in culinary competitions. Or perhaps you're that person drawn to helping people and want to work in the medical field. The patient care pathway will allow you to study human anatomy on 3D simulation tools and be trained in emergency response with real medical equipment. The residential and commercial construction pathway isn't your typical woodworking class. It will have you working with a team from design to conception as you build a shed from the ground up, giving you the skills and knowledge to enter the workforce.
They can go from a design into a build and actually see it work. And then you get stories from kids that have graduated and they're off working with construction. In these advisory roles, you get to help those kids see the next step in their career.
For the entrepreneur or future CEO, business management pathway is where you will master business principles and get an understanding of what makes a successful business leader. The software and systems pathway is for those wanting to harness their inner programmer and write code. You'll even design your own video game. And our newest pathway is networking for those students wanting to understand information technology and cybersecurity.
My advice to parents that are looking at the CTE program is do it. It gives your kids that confidence that they can survive in today's world.
I'm most proud of our teachers because it's the teachers that helped build this program. And I'm also really proud of our district in having the vision very early on to realize that career technical education needed to be part of our curricular program.
This and much more is the excitement behind our career technical education pathways. To learn more about CTE, visit our website.
Spoke for itself. Well, I'll just speak for it then. You know, first of all, thank you, Michael, and Annette and Adriana for putting that together. It was really special. And as I was watching that, I was thinking back. Fifteen years ago, when I first was running for school board, and I talked to Steve Gleyer, who worked in the district at that time and really handled these types of things. This is before we had a director of CTE. And he said to me when I was running, you need to learn about CTE. That's the up-and-coming thing. That's what's happening. That was 15 years ago, and we really didn't have any programs in our district at that time. And when I think back now to what we've done over the past 15 years, then bringing in Mr. Vossen as a director of CTE with his group, it's really remarkable. And I think our students throughout the district are just so fortunate to be able to have that opportunity in so many areas. And not all of our CTE was even covered in this. So, very, very nice. The student board, somebody wants to speak?
We'd love it.
Absolutely.
Yep, Brittany and Luca both.
So, the Estancia Medical Academy is home to the, the Estancia High School is home to the medical academy, and I was a part of it for the past two years. It's a three-year pathway, but I caught up in those two years. And I just wanted to say, looking back in that video, I think the pathway is awesome. The technology that is invested into that program and the effort and dedication that the teacher, Mr. Yuki, puts in is phenomenal. I think what has caused me and led me to this medical pathway was the CTE pathway that Mr. Yuki led. And I just think it's such a vital program. And I would like to just speak a little bit and advocate for the program because I think it's touched my lives as well as the lives of many Estancia students. So I would just like to say, thank you for the dedication and the time and effort and resources that are put into those pathways because they do make a difference in the lives of students.
Thank you. And that's great to have a testimonial. Okay, wow, that was wonderful. Okay, we're moving on to community input on non-agendized items. Trustee Matwaye, would you read?
Speakers wishing to address the board on non-agendized items have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website by 11:00 AM today, Tuesday, June 15th, 2021. Comments on agenda items, on non-agenda items. Okay, on non-agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
So we have three comments on non-agendized items. Mrs. Fish, would you pull them up, please?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Yelsey. The first comment card is from Erica Viapando, who was logged in, but I don't see her name right now. So let's move on to the second card, which is Fiorella Gardella. Ms. Gardella, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself. State your name for the record and begin speaking.
Yes, good evening, trustees and honored guests. My name is Fiorella Gardella, and I wanted to address the panel because my son attends the Mandarin program at College Park. I have talked to other parents and agree that our children will benefit to have a follow-up during the summer so they can keep up with the Mandarin language during the summer and be ready for the following year. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next comment card is from Rory Sewula. Ms. Sewula, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself. State your name for the record and begin speaking.
Hello, I'm Rory Sewula. I go to Chillicothe Elementary. So when I was talking about the bathroom that I go in, the issues with my bathroom, I was saying, well, I haven't talked about issues yet. My issues are that when I can't reach the light, so my principal gave me a ruler for a solution. And I had a light, like a very tiny light that would touch, but it wasn't that bright as the other one. And when we try to fix the bathroom, people usually say something cold. But we need to fix the ADA code because like, this school was made 60 years ago. We need to make a change about what's happening. And the other things are, it's that I have immediate access to the bathroom. I don't have immediate access. Sometimes when the door is locked, it's like someone's using it, a teacher's using it, like the handicapped bathroom. And students are using it, like that same special ed. And sometimes it's just locked when no one is using it. And I can't reach the sink and I have to use the wipe to wipe my hands. And that's not sanitary because it's during like the COVID, you know, the virus. So we have to like wash our hands with like soap and water. And if I couldn't even use the soap, I can't because that's like right next to the sink. So I can't even reach that either. And I feel like that I'm not being heard. And I feel like that we need a change. We need a change with the whole school. And another reason for that is we have to not, sorry, the general ed bathrooms. I don't have a stall for that, but shouldn't special ed people have a stall for the handicapped bathroom? Like a handicapped stall? Some people have that for the right, but no, Chillicothe says it's got to be code. And I feel like that's the end of things. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rory. President Yelsey, no more speakers in the queue.
Superintendent comments.
Okay, good evening again. So first of all, I want to acknowledge our student board members who are all here in person, except for Luca, who's at home. But I just want to make a comment also that I have just been so impressed with all of you. And you represent your schools very well. You represented this board very well because you're part of this board. And we're so proud of you and I certainly wish you each a lot of success. And I'm very confident all of you are going to be highly, highly successful in all of your goals and dreams. So again, thank you for all that you represent and all the things that you've done. Okay, and I just want to acknowledge that I appreciate the board that had the vision to elevate this program. And as you can see this year, what we got, it was really amazing. I wish we were able to do more in person throughout the year, but I'm glad that we were able to have you all here in person. And so great to see you all and wish you well. Okay? And so, the next thing I wanted to say is this past week has been absolutely amazing. And I know all of our trustees were out and about. And I know our, all of our trustees were out and about attending events and promotions and graduations, athletic championships and, and everything that was happening right at the end of the year. And what's amazing about it is that this, these were all in-person events. And I'm so proud of the fact that this board has been committed from day one of this pandemic was to get our students back in person to start doing this or to resume doing the things that they love and do best. And we were able to see that these last few weeks of the school year, whether it was performing arts or athletics or learning in class with their, with their colleagues and doing the hands-on learning that makes everything so special. So I was just very, very pleased that, that we made it. We made it through the year. We ended strong and what a team effort this was. Truly a team effort. I'm so proud of you. You named the employee and the duty. There wasn't a single area that was untouched by these challenges and everybody stepped up to make this happen. And so I'm very, very proud that we finished strong. We concluded this year and we're looking forward to some better normal times. Okay? And that gets my little segue into what's happening with the guidance and what's happening with, with the new rules. So I was hoping to be able to say definitively today at this board meeting, what the state guidance is. Okay? So unfortunately I can't do that. So I'm going to give kind of a quick update here. The good news is that as we all see here in the state of California, there are some big announcements. And today they're calling reopening day, June 15. We're all really looking forward to that. And as we know, out in the, the public and a lot of businesses, the rules are going to change very dramatically. And, and that's all great and very much welcome. And so the good news is that as we go into the summer, as we definitely get into the fall, things are going to look a lot more normal. And that's what I've been sharing with the various groups I've been talking to, our principals, is the fact that it's going to be a lot better. And what we are waiting for is OSHA has a very important meeting coming up on June 17th in a couple of days. And at that point, they're going to make some decisions and it will affect employees throughout our state and here in our school district. So we're waiting for that. And the other thing that we've been waiting on is the specific guidance released by the California Department of Public Health, specific to schools. And what I have been hearing, and this is very important for everybody to understand, while it is delayed, it's actually for a very logical and legitimate reason. They are trying to align that to the CDC's updated guidance on the schools as well as the OSHA guidance that's going to be approved on Thursday. And that's what we want. We want guidance that is aligned. What has been very difficult throughout this pandemic is when you have one agency saying one thing and another one, and it's very hard on everybody. So if we get it all aligned, and I know our board in our district, we want to be aligned with the guidance and it's going to be better than what it has been in the past. You know, I'd rather wait a few more days and get that guidance and be consistent and aligned with it. But our world, our world at schools are going to look very different because it's anticipated social distancing may not be there, which has been our biggest obstacle. Okay? And the masks and the plexiglass and the temperature taking and all the things that we have learned to manage, but we don't like and we want to get back to as much normalcy as possible. And that's on the horizon. I know that as soon as we get this guidance, we will very closely analyze it, review it, and make the changes we can right away. And I'll give you some examples. We are looking at what we can do differently, less restrictive during our summer programs. Okay? But we have to see what the final guidance is. And I know our summer programs are starting right around the corner. We want to look at what our board meetings look like in public. Okay? We want these plexiglass, our masks, you know, we want to remove a lot of these things and protocols as much as possible and maintain our safety. And then of course, for the fall, we want to make sure that we are ready. And as you know, we have committed now for months to be full day in person, back to level one. We're still committed to do that. And it's just the, the other details and, and protocols that we're going to have to follow. But the good news is that it's going to be a lot better than what we've had to endure this past year. Finally, I just want to say that since the last board meeting, I made a big announcement. And that big announcement is that I will be retiring. My last day will be August 2nd. And I just want to say I'm very pleased with the board taking quick action to move on the superintendent search because I want to know who to pass that baton. Okay? And so I'm very pleased with that. And I know leadership associates will do a great job in supporting you to make that very important decision. But I want to say that meanwhile, myself, the team that I work with, the standing team, we are working very hard right now. We're working hard to prepare for summer school. We're working very hard to prepare for the fall. And even though it feels like we're ending the year and we kind of go into a slower summer mode, that is not the case in many of our departments. It is the opposite where we are ramping up and we're getting ready and that starts, it already has started and we continue to work hard throughout the summer. So I just want you to know that that's my commitment throughout the summer until my very last day, when I hand that baton off, I'm going to be working, supporting this team to get ready for the fall. Okay? So that is my report for tonight.
Thank you. What the public can't see with his mask on is when he announces his retirement, he has a big smile on his face under that. Thank you, Superintendent Lee Sung. Community input on agendized items, you already read that. And we do have three comments on the consent calendar. So Mrs. Fish, if you could pull those three people up.
Thank you, President Yelsey. Our first speaker is Zachariah Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes. State your name for the record and begin speaking.
Hi, this is my husband's account.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name is Haley and I'm a Costa Mesa resident and parent of two young children. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'd just like to open by saying I am going to reference the topic of race and critical race theory. And I want to express that my family believes everyone is important. We are all created equal and that stereotyping and racism is not okay. With that in mind, I do have several concerns and a few questions for you all regarding your business dealings with the company True Equity. First of all, I want to know why you chose the specific company and why you feel the need to continue to use 45,000 of our tax dollars to fund them? I'm aware that in 2019, you contacted the Anti-Defamation League after the social media post of students creating a swastika out of plastic cups went viral. Yes, a stupid and immature mistake from a very small group of students. But again, spending tens of thousands of our dollars, you created a human relations task force to subject high school students and staff to anti-bias trainings. Instead of stopping there, you felt the need to keep the idea that racism and biases are somehow a major problem in our district. So I would like you all to cite, if any, the major student events or actions that lead you to continue this. The company you hired in 2020, True Equity, and its creator, Teresa Neighbors, have nothing to do with teaching kids what they need to know to graduate, but instead operates under the guise of social justice. Just read her company bio. Her programs are supposedly transforming communities for racial and social equity. You all alongside Ms. Neighbors and the Social Justice Task Force have created implicit bias and becoming an ally trainees. You've had Costa Mesa high schoolers trained to be part of a diversity, inclusion, and racial healing ambassador program. Use all the fancy language you want, but all of these terms are part of critical race theory and they only serve to divide children, not bring them together. They teach them to notice skin color and falsely believe that we are not all equal. Are you all aware that we just came out of a pandemic? The kids were stuck in their homes for months and months doing Zoom school and many did not thrive, as you know, in this situation. Learning losses were significant. So maybe, just maybe, instead of using the money to fund social justice task forces, the money could be better spent in enriching these children's education. Maybe the focus should be on reading, math, writing, the most obvious things that should be taught in the school. Or hey, we could give the speaker Rory Semula access to a bathroom at Chillicothe. That would be a great way to spend the money. Perhaps this would increase our school standings and actually benefit the children because looking at our numbers, we're not doing so great. These are children and they need an education not to be indoctrinated. They deserve the very best. And I, along four other families I know, pulled our children out of the district this year. I assume you don't care that much as long as my tax dollars keep rolling in, but I do want to have them come back. However, when I see you funding programs like these and read and hear about the new high school classes being created alongside this company, I have to believe you do not have these children's best interest in mind. So to wrap up, I again ask you to answer why you chose this company and continue to use them and to give us all specific examples of the so-called inequity the district sees seemingly creating a problem when there really is none. As long as I'm a Costa Mesa-
Miss Jenkins, your three minutes is up.
I will continue to come here and fight for the rights of these children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Wendy Lee's. Please unmute yourself. You have three minutes. State your name for the record and begin speaking.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Good evening, Board, Trustees and Mr. Lee Sung. My name is Wendy Lee's and I am a frequent agenda watcher. I knew because the city Costa Mesa budget is being voted on tonight, that also that the school district budget would be considered. And so as I was looking for that, I too came across this MOU that the previous speaker mentioned, which is kind of interesting because the name True Equity just really caught my attention. Because there is a lot of discussion in communities about critical race theory. So I did read the MOU and I did go online to check out the website. But my concerns tonight are really about the process because when I read the MOU, it said from the 20 to the 21 school year. So I would like to know if this company is going to be hired again, or if this is something that kind of fell through the cracks and was not posted on an agenda way back when the consulting began. Also, just to, it's, it's, what was, was, were there RFP put out? In other words, were other companies considered and why was this one considered? I know that Dr. Baumeister ran the Human Relations Task Force meetings. I went to quite a few of them and after the event and, and to the speakers and it was enlightening, but at, at some point I felt like there really wasn't anything being accomplished because the committee had already presented the recommendations to the trustees. So I just want to know why the MOU wasn't posted nine months ago or for this year and if this company will continue to be working for the school district and how we can find out more about the curriculum and what is actually being taught so that we can understand what's going on in the classrooms. Also, I do commend Rory Sewula. I think she's going to be quite a leader to be able to speak so articulately about her issues of just being taken care of as far as her needs are concerned. And I hope you address those quickly. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our third comment card, the, the speaker is not online. So President Yelsey, there are no more speakers in the queue.
Thank you. Before we move on to the consent calendar, I'm going to give Superintendent Lee Sung an opportunity to address those comments because there was maybe some issues that are not understood well.
Right. Yeah. Thank you, President Yelsey. I just wanted to comment and make sure that this particular item is taken in the proper context with the right information. As you know, our district did support a, and has been supporting a human relations task force. And Dr. Neighbors and what this agenda item is for is her role in helping facilitate that human relations task force. And I asked Dr. Baumeister to come up, who has been the lead in this particular initiative, to just provide a little more information in terms of what this is so that nobody has misinformation. Dr. Baumeister.
So if you remember, at the end of the 1920s school year, we had an implementation plan for the Human Relations Task Force. Dr. Neighbors came in to facilitate that group. And really what the group's work was, was to look at the implementation plan and to see if the programs that we were implementing were doing what we wanted them to do. So it was program evaluation. So she worked with the committee to look at the implementation plan and to come up with rubrics, evaluation rubrics, that this year, as we implement the plan in this school year, we'll have those rubrics to be able to talk to the students, the staff and the parents to get their ideas on how they felt the programs went. So that was the work that she did with the Human Relations Task Force, was working with them to update the implementation plan and then to provide rubrics for those different programs for program evaluation for this year of our programs in the implementation plan.
Thank you, Dr. Baumeister. I just want to add that this agenda item is for approval for work that has been done already this year. Okay? One thing I want to assure our trustees is that no decisions have been made moving to next year, even though of course we do value human relations. How we do that, who we bring on to assist us has not been decided. Okay? And I want to make that, that very clear. And that of course would be done with the input of our board. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Baumeister.
Thank you. Okay, so we will now move on to approval of the consent calendar. Do you have a motion?
I believe I have to abstain, right?
Pardon?
I believe I have to abstain, right? Because of the item. Okay.
Right. Okay.
I move to approve the consent calendar, noting that item 17B1 has been moved to discussion action.
Your second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Wigan. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulu?
Abstain.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Thank you for answering all of the questions that we had. I know a lot of us had a lot of questions. This was a very large agenda. So thank you for the answers.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion action. Item 18A, ratify the agreement for employment of assistant superintendent, secondary education between the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District and Carrie Torres dated June 15th, 2021. We, right. And we have, already have met Dr. Torres. So do we have a motion?
I move that we ratify this item.
Second?
Who was moved, who moved?
I moved.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Ursulu. Roll call vote.
There needs to be a readout?
Right.
In terms of the-
All right. It is recommended that the Board of Education ratify the agreement to employ Ms. Torres in the position of Assistant Superintendent, Secondary Education from June 15th, 2021 to June 30th, 2024, with an annual salary of $242,489, $9,000 operational allowances plus health and welfare benefits commensurate with all employees. The terms of the agreement are attached to the agenda. Now we'll have the roll call.
Student Board Member Paulina Vasquez? Yes. Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Um, yes, but I would like to discuss after. Thank you.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
I didn't hear what trustee Anderson said. You said yes. And then what was the, what was the side? I know this is plexiglass.
Oh, I, I said yes, but I would like to discuss this item when we're done.
Okay.
Right now? We're done?
Yes. So for me, I voted yes because I do not want to block this from happening. But I have some concerns and I just was about the contract language and I would love an opportunity at some point for us to review what our boilerplate contract language entails. what our boilerplate contract language entails. Some of the things for me, I know we have to follow certain things in ed code, but for one thing, the terms of the contract, we're not allowed to go over four years, but there's not minimum amounts. And so I just would love, we haven't, as a new board, we didn't have it with the previous board either, but I would love an opportunity for us to discuss as a district what we would like to have as our commonplace contract language. I think one of the things for me is that the terms, the rollover component, to me, I, I would love to not continue to have that. And then even just having a conversation if, for regularly across the board for Assistant Superintendents, there's language in there about providing medical benefits for a spouse for their lifetime. And I think if we have unfunded liabilities, that's one thing to address and possibly minimize. So at some point, I would love, I don't know if we would do that during a study session, but I would just welcome the opportunity to have the conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Anderson. I just want to make sure everyone understands that the terms of the agreement that was just approved related to benefits and the option to add a spouse is standard language for all employees in our district. It's not an added benefit just for executives. I just want to make sure that that's clear. But certainly, future discussions with the board to the superintendent on future contracts can certainly be, be done. Thank you.
Item 18B, approve 2021-22 Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. Assistant Superintendent Olson.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we bring before you an annual declaration that we send to the Commission on Teaching Credentials for, of the need for fully qualified educators. And this declaration is the provision that we send to the CTC in the event that we need to hire people with the special permits. And you can see the different ones that are listed there. So this is just a guestimate. It does not indicate the number of openings we have. And we have in the past utilized these, but there's also been years where we haven't used them at all. And so tonight, we would ask you to approve the declaration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Matoye, seconded by Trustee Barto. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Student Board Member Paulina Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Paulina, we need to get you a microphone down. 18C, approve Charter Facility, Charter Facilities Use Agreement by and between Newport Mesa Unified School District and the International School for Science and Culture.
President Yelsey, I've got some.
Okay.
Okay, so last fall, the district received a timely Proposition 39 request for facilities for the 2021-22 school year from the International School of Science and Culture, or ISIC, a charter school authorized by the Orange County Board of Education, operating within the district boundaries. The district processed that request and determined ISIC was entitled to facilities pursuant to the Prop 39 standards and requirements. Today, before the board for consideration and action is the Facilities Use Agreement that was negotiated between the district and ISIC in accordance with the requirements of Prop 39. Pursuant to the agreement, ISIC will occupy the same space it previously occupied at the district's Harper Assessment Center for the 2021-2022 school year, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in this agreement. ISIC's governing board approved the agreement at its June 10 meeting and its district staff recommendation that the board approve this agreement.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
All second.
Thank you, lady. Any discussion? Okay, moved by Trustee Matoye, seconded by Trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Paulina Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Okay, next, we were, we have added item 17B1 for discussion action. So we'll move back to that. And it is approve elementary textbooks. Mr. Lee Sung, would you like to take that, or is Mr. Drake?
Yeah, actually, I believe Trustee Anderson pulled the item, so maybe she can start with that. And then I've got Mr. Drake and Laura Del Pash ready to answer any questions.
Oh, thank you. I don't have any questions. My, my understanding was I just wanted to keep with our current, our protocols for our board policy that anything related to curriculum is a discussion action item. So I just wanted to continue that. I feel like it's important to follow that, even if we've had a lot of conversation about it. And so that is what I'm wanting to do. I also, anecdotally, I'm just really excited that we're adding content-rich, great history and social studies for our dual-language programs. And I'm looking forward to that continuing for middle school for those students. Thank you.
Excellent. And I just want to acknowledge that at Agenda Prep, we will definitely keep that in mind. The point you just made, I, I just want to state for the record and, and the public that this was brought at our last board meeting. And so it was disclosed as well as a textbook display that occurred during this time. Okay, so, so with that, if there's no other questions, then the board can consider that.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Matoye, seconded by Trustee Barto. Roll call.
Student Board Member Paulina Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Okay, and you think we're done after discussion action, but no.
But no, but wait, there's more.
Not today.
We move on to resolution calendar, which is very lengthy today. 19A, adopt resolution number 270621, education protection account expenditure determination. Mr. Trader?
Some time ago, the state created an education protection account. The district receives about $4 million from this. And we simply have to disclose how we spend that money. We cannot spend it on administration. And so this is that disclosure.
May I ask a question while you're here? I noticed that it was part of the, part of the item, it says that the Board of Education will determine how the money is will be spent. And I, I saw on there, it said instruction. What specifically an instruction is that money going towards? And how do we, as a board, have an opportunity to talk about how it will be spent?
So this, this is all classroom instruction? So anything that's happening in a classroom, this money is used to fund that stuff for staffing? And we can certainly have discussions about if you have particular interests on how this money is spent. We're certainly open to that.
Yeah, I would love just a kind of more itemized list as to where that goes, so.
It's all in the classroom, classroom instruction, staffing.
Well, right, but like K to 12, what, like what? It, I, I just want more information. It's just like instruction, $3 million. I would, I would just like to see, and it says that the board decides how it will be spent. So that's why I'm asking.
Sure.
Because I feel like we haven't really had an opportunity to decide how it will be spent.
Mr. Trader, I, I assume this is money that we have made a decision to spend this money. We have approved the spending. You're putting it in this account because this money specifically has to go for that purpose.
We, we, yes, we, some time ago, received direction that this should go to instruction, and so we've put the money there.
We spend more money in instruction than this amount.
Yeah, right.
For teachers.
I, I think that's.
This is teachers.
Teachers.
I would love to know just a little more specifics. And it sounds like you got direction a while ago. So we're on newer board, so I would love to have that chat again. Thank you.
So just to clarify, so when we actually approve the budget, we have given you the allowance to use those funds, right? Because we are looking at the budget. So doesn't it kind of go under that umbrella?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Wigan. Roll call.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Item 19B, adopt resolution 280621 to approve local agreement CSP 1353 for Child Development Services with the California Department of Education for the state preschool program for 2021-2022 school year. And I see Mr. Drake and Kathleen Leary ready to speak.
I'm going to turn the, the actual next three resolutions over to Kathleen Leary, our Director of Early Childhood Education.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Russell Lee Sung, I'm here to just present the first resolution, which is our money that helps support our local preschools. We have part-day and full-day preschools at nine of our elementary sites. All nine have part-day. And there's two sites that have full-day, full-year. And there's two classes at Pomona and two classes at Whittier, and those run 246 days. So every day the school district is open, we are open for business. And so the money that here, it primarily goes towards staffing, but also all the instructional supplies and all the other things that we need in order to maintain our preschool program.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Trustee Anderson, trust, seconded by Trustee Wigan. Roll call.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Okay. We now will move on to 19C, adopt resolution 290621 to approve local agreement CPKS 1058 for Child Development Services with the California Department of Education for the pre-kindergarten and family literacy program for the 2021-2022 school year. We have Mr. Drake and Mrs. Leary again.
Yes, it's me again. And this one is the second grant that we have. It's an annual grant that we get. This one is for $20,000 and we, it is for literacy and we use it primarily to help support. We have a parent and child together time, which is the first 15 minutes of the, the school day for our children. And the parents come in and this, this, the parent, the teacher is modeling things that parents can do at home and families can do at home to support early literacy and early math skills. In addition, we purchase books that students bring home that's theirs to keep so that they can build their own home library. And we also give them activities that they can do with their family around reading and around the subject area of the books that we send home.
Which four schools? It looks like there are four schools that use this program.
Yes, so the schools, oh, wait a minute, they're not on here. I'm sorry. I thought. I will get you the four school sites. At the time that this money was distributed, it was based on the 2005 API score. And I will be, I will get you those names, because I apologize. Usually, we have that on this resolution, so I will make sure that you have those.
You, I would like to make a motion, please.
Pardon?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved by Trustee Anderson, seconded by Trustee Barto. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
We're doing a lot in early childhood education today. So I know that makes a lot of people happy. 19D, adopt resolution number 300621, authorizing Newport Mesa Unified School District Board of Education to support implementation of the early childhood policy framework and participation in the early childhood coalition.
I'm very excited. Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I would like to state for the meeting record, Rosie, that I'm employed by Charitable Ventures, which is the fiscal sponsor for many nonprofits, including Early Childhood OC. So I will need to abstain from voting on this resolution at this time. While I do not work directly with sponsored projects, it's important, this sponsored project or any others, it's important to me to be transparent on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Leary?
Yes, I just want to let you know about an exciting coalition that we have developed with the city of Costa Mesa as well as HOG. It is a coalition that focuses on early childhood in Costa Mesa. And it has started in about 2019. We began our discussions and created a group of committed stakeholders and really looking at early childhood. Because as you know, we have preschoolers and, that are three and four-year-olds. But we would really like to reach out to families from birth to age, you know, to age five. And this was one way to partner with the city and partner with HOG in order to kind of spread the reach, so to speak. One of the things that we have done in coordination with HOG and Costa Mesa is we have purchased some backpacks for all the incoming kindergarten students in Costa Mesa. In those backpacks are a lot of manipulatives and scissors. There's a book about kindergarten, flashcards with the ABCs. There's paper and pencils and crayons, and I won't show you all of it. But it also has a resource, which is our website that we have on the Newport Mesa website, which has all sorts of kindergarten readiness activities, as well as some resources out in communities that parents can go to, similar to the OC library, things that they can do over the summer to get their students ready for kindergarten. And so it's really an exciting collaboration so that we can really reach out to our families before they get to our schools and promote kindergarten readiness.
Can I, Mrs. Le, Ms. Leary?
Yes.
When do the children get the backpacks?
So we have distributed, because of a lot of our elementary sites with the school office being closed, we have passed them out to some local preschools, as well as our preschools that have students that are coming into our schools. Along with, we will be handing them out at the Welcome Center as well. Next year, I would love to continue this project, but also having them at the school sites so that when kids are, parents are registering, that they can pick up the, the backpack at that time. But due to the pandemic, logistics weren't, you know, what they were. And so we reached out to preschools and we will be going to the Welcome Center. We've already passed about, out about 250.
Do you get a copy of the early childhood policy framework?
Yes, I will make sure you have that.
Do you have a motion?
I actually have a question. I have been a member of the committee as well for the, at least a year and a half. And I've done some work for them pro bono. Do I need to abstain on this?
If you're just on the committee?
And, yeah.
You have no.
No financial, no.
No.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve it. But similar to Trustee Barto, I think it's important, I mean, I've seen it because I've helped draft it. But I feel like everyone should see the policy framework and see what we're committing to and the breadth of this, and the scope of what is being asked of the district so that everyone here can, can understand the full depth.
It's, it's a big commitment. I've seen it as well. And I really love to.
It's a big commitment. I've seen it as well, and I really love to be, well, with my work with Pretend City. They're kind of a part of that too in that coalition. So I think that sharing that and showing people what we have committed to is really important. So if we could also have it posted on the agenda, I don't know, after the, after the fact for the public.
Second.
I could also put that on our website.
No, you didn't.
Trustee.
I don't have a second yet. Great. It was moved by trustee Ursulu, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Abstain.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursula.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to public hearings, twenty A, report on the Local Control and Accountability Plan and the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two's budget.
Okay, so as you know, annually, we need to have a public hearing and report on the Local Control and Accountability Plan. And our wonderful Vanessa Gailey obviously starts probably around April to gather all this information together and present that to you this evening for our LCAP plan. So Vanessa, take it away.
Okay, thank you very much, John, and we miss you here, but we have you here in spirit, so thank you. This is a joint presentation tonight from Ed Services and Student Services and a real collaboration. And we're very excited to present the LCAP tonight. So with that, President Yelsey and Russell, Mr. Lee Sung and members of the board and community, we're excited to present this draft of the three-year plan for the public hearing. And then it is going to be hopefully subsequently approved at next week's meeting. But we wanted to walk you through some of the features of the plan. I will go first and present the majority of the plan. Dr. Jockum is here to answer any questions if they arise around her area of expertise. And then after that, Mr. Trader will do part two in our dance of the LCAP and the budget together. And so we wanted to make all of that known ahead of the public hearings so that people could provide comment. So I hope I get this right. I believe I'm supposed to alt-tab. And. Ta-da, but that's Mr. Trader. There we go, I too can tab. Okay, so we're going to present the features of the plan this evening. And a reminder for our public, because I know that this is not something that you live and breathe, but the LCAP is a three-year plan. It's the Local Control and Accountability Plan. We've made every effort to spell out the acronyms wherever possible so that it could be a readable document. It's a requirement of all districts, whether or not your community funded. It's a three-year plan, but it can evolve. And it's an alignment of the district budgets to the district plans. So that's why we present tonight, and it's intended to show what we're intending to do for all of our students as well as our media students in terms of being low-income English learner foster youth. The Local Control Funding Formula is money that goes to most school districts. It's on top of the base dollar amount. That's also called Local Control Funding Formula or commonly known as General Fund. We have our General Fund, which we call General Fund. And then there's other state, local, and federal funds, which we do include in the plan. Every year, by statute, it's required to be approved by the board by June thirtieth. And within five days, we submit that to the Orange County Department of Education for review and approval. So where can members of the public find the LCAP? If you go to the website and you go to the I Want to dropdown, we are the last but not the least option. And so you can find us there, and we have our own page dedicated, not just to the Local Control and Accountability Plan, but all of the plans that relate to it. One of the features of our plan is that it encompasses some of the actions of other plans that you've seen previously, even as recently as the May eighteenth meeting. So first, what we have here is an odd year for the LCAP. Because of school closure, we were not going according to the regular timeline. We were planning to present a plan to the draft, a draft to the board in June of twenty twenty, but obviously that was suspended. We had to write an operations report, and then subsequently, we did a learning continuity and attendance plan. And so this current iteration features two years of annual updates. In the future, it will only conclude one year of annual update. And then it also has the three-year plan where we shall, where we spell out the planned actions for next year, but also our targets for three years from now. And then at the very end, it has the budgeted expenditures. So the plan leads with a budget overview for parents. This is a template designed by the state. We have very little wiggle room on it, and I have to tell you, I've wrestled with it quite a bit. But we've tried to make it as readable as possible. Anything in blue, we cannot edit. And it comes with prompts that are, and limits, so we're limited to usually something like seventy-five characters. So it does keep us a little short, and you'll notice the rest of our LCAP is quite a bit longer. But it's intended to show a budget view in two ways, looking again at all of the funds together and what would be the total budget. And then also looking at, all right, now in terms of the Local Control Funding Formula, what might be included in our plan in the orange? And then particularly, the blue slice of the LCFF supplemental and concentration grants. And if Newport Mesa were not a community-funded district, we would be in line to get a supplemental grant. And that it would be in tune with fifteen million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars. We are not eligible for a concentration grant. That's typically group schools, school districts with fifty-five percent or more of the unduplicated groups of students. So those would be school districts like Santa Ana and Anaheim and Garden Grove. So this is intended to, again, show another picture of the total budgeted general fund expenditures. That's in all of the budgets throughout the district. If members of our community want to see a larger, more detailed accounting of the dollars, I recommend that they go to the Budget Book, the All Funds Budget. It's published on the Fiscal Services website. In our LCAP, we account for a hundred and eighty-eight million, six hundred ninety-four, five hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. So it's not, again, a dollar-for-dollar accounting, but we really do attempt to show the programs and services that we're providing for all of our kids, for some of our kids, and for a few of our kids. Additionally, we have to write an essay at the end where we address, how are we spending that fifteen million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars? What you'll notice is at the bottom, we intend to spend actually more than that in service of our students in those particular categories. And we're able to do that because we're community-funded, but we've found the need to really provide some of these targeted supports and services as well as to provide them on a school-wide and a district-wide basis. This is another annual update look, and what this is, it's more confusing in this budget overview than in any other. The last plan that we had to write was the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And it's not like the LCAP where we would also write to the fourteen million dollar-ish target that we had. We only had to account for, within the Learning Continuity Plan, those actions and services that fit those categories and also were from targeted towards our unduplicated count. So you can see here that of the budgeted funds, we intended to spend a million, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, and we spent quite a bit more. But when you think about what we were trying to do, especially around nutrition and the increased amount of technology that we distributed, as well as some things like, we bought more signage than we thought we were going to. But in the end, it was an important expenditure. So those are some of the reasons why our calculations were off. So now we get into the two annual updates and where you can find them in the plan. And so on the LCAP annual update, what you'll see through, sprinkled throughout, is really an explanation that there was data collection that we intended to do, but with the testing halted, with end-of-year data collections halted, and with some adjustments to things like suspensions and expulsions. We have some data, but it's not necessarily comparable. And so we really get a little bit repetitive throughout the document, trying to point that out to folks. But I want to walk us down memory lane and go back in time so that you think about the, the, when we wrote that plan and then what we were trying to achieve. And so we were focused on the nineteen-twenty goals, and this whole plan was approved in June of twenty nineteen. So any adjustments we had made were well before the pandemic and with the best of intentions of carrying through with all of those actions and services. So at the time, we had eight goals. And again, I'm proud of those eight goals, because when I got here, we had, I think, twenty-nine. So eight goals felt really good, and that current plan, that plan was approved on June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. It addressed all of the required state priorities and not necessarily aligned. So priority one in the state was not goal one, but we moved things around to what we thought was really meaningful for our district. So these are the eight state priorities for districts. And so you can see that they fall into three categories: conditions of learning, pupil outcomes, and engagement. And so as we were looking at trying to make a plan moving forward, we worked quite extensively with the county and looking at ways that we could infuse multi-tiered systems of support. And so one of their recommendations was, think about how you might look at that, as well as look at slimming down your, your, streamlining your goals even more and thinking about the categories from the state. So keep that in the back of your mind as we're thinking about the plan moving forward. But it is a requirement in statute that you address each one of the eight state priorities, and there are required metrics that align to the state priorities that you have to include. Now, there are actually ten state priorities, but what they do is they put them together for both county offices and districts. But I wanted to include this graphic, because if you go to the California Department of Education, you'll see it. And so I just put little stars next to foster youth and expelled youth. And again, it's not that those are not priorities for us, but in terms of the requirements of the statute, those are elements specific to the county offices. So different look, you can see it's supposed to be one system of connected resources and supports. And again, conditions of learning, the student outcomes, and the engagement. But notice what they have in the center, which is something that we think is so great, the cradle-to-career, healthy, safe, engaged, challenged, and supported. And we really think like that the state hit a home run on that one. So what you'll see in the annual update is quite a bit of language, and next year it'll be a lot shorter. But we had to verbatim copy whatever we said we expected as an annual outcome and the actions and services. And then we had to say the actual. So typically, what will happen when we do, come to you in June, is we will say, we want to hit a target, but the year's not over. So we have to give you the best data at that time. So the benefit of having to do the annual update well after the year is over is, we did have quite a few actuals. Not student, not smart or balanced assessments, but there were some other elements of data. So wherever we could, we would note, testing was suspended, but we had a participation rate. And so from the most recent participation rate, here is what we had. So we tried to provide at least something and acknowledge when it was not from the timeframe that we were aiming for. Then we also include the budgeted expenditures and the actual expenditures. I will tell you that since we've released the draft, OCDE has reminded us that we're supposed to put budget references. So we've gone through and put budget references throughout the annual update, and I hope you all enjoy them. So what we do here is we put the budgeted and the actuals, and then after that, at the end, we explain material differences. So obviously, some things didn't happen because of the pandemic, and wherever it was a large material difference, we noted that. Just a reminder to folks, though, that sometimes, I know in a personal budget, it seems like maybe twenty thousand dollars might seem like a lot. But when you're thinking about instructional materials for over twenty thousand students, sometimes that's not as big as a discrepancy as one might fear. So after you weighed through all eight of the goals and the annual updates for that, you'll get down to the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And really, the purpose of this plan was to address the learning conditions of distance learning and hybrid learning and help us adjust. So this will explain what we did when we had the different levels of one, two, and three. And then we were supposed to explain successes and challenges throughout the year. So again, going back in time, Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan was approved September fifteenth. Doesn't seem like that long ago, but it feels like a long time ago. And these were the areas that were included in that plan, where we did have stakeholder engagement, as we always do, and that was a requirement of the plan. But also notice all of these things that would never have been in our original LCAP. And so we addressed each one of these, as well as the required areas for expenditures, noting when it was contributing to the increase in improved services. And then we did have an essay at the very end that still required us to address what were we doing for our media students. The annual update will look like this. It tells you what we offered. It will tell you what happened, and it will tell you if we had changes to our planned expenditures. And then the contributing means, yes, it would have counted for an LCFF purpose. It's great reading. I encourage everyone to take a look at it. Then we provide an overall analysis, and some of the things that we learned from that year, it's more recent than the other year, but really thinking about it, it is not like we just learned that health and wellness was important. But we really, really learned that health and wellness for our students and our employees and our families is so critical. And so those were some of the things that we took away as we wanted to launch into back in person and then again for the fall. Again, with the academics, we learned so much about how teachers approached their teaching and some of the things that were afforded to them and that they were able to learn through the distance learning and the new tools, as well as having some of those smaller class sizes and different configurations. So again, you know, learning how to work with the various groups, but then also learning that we're going to get back to a more normal setting. And then lastly, we learned a lot about technology and communication. And so those were the lessons that we're taking into the new year. So there's an overall analysis that brings those pieces together, as I said. And so what we learned is that we really, really are going to commit to the multi-tiered systems of support more than ever, because we know that our children are whole children, and we want to be very well-rounded. And so when we're thinking about our district-wide approach moving forward, it's not like we haven't been doing it. We just want to be very explicit when we are, that we're paying attention to the academic, the behavior, and the social-emotional. And if you notice from the bottom of the pyramid up, we're looking at universal or tier-one supports. What do we do for all of our kiddos, just because they breathe? And then next is the targeted, the tier-two, and then finally, that intensive. And so we're just very committed, and that's why I hope you metaphorically see John Drake and you physically see Sarah Jockum, because we're really committed to doing this together. And so moving forward, we have the Local Control and Accountability Plan. We gathered input throughout the winter and the spring. We had a district survey, some thought exchanges. We have various advisory councils and committees. We have principals and assistant principals giving us constant feedback. We worked with our bargaining units to get input from them as well. And then also, we have the site level, school parents and student groups. We had school site council and ELAX, and then, of course, we have the school staffs participate in giving us feedback. So we really tried to get input. We also did something new that hasn't been done for a few years. We did public forums. We had AM and PM public forums in English and Spanish. We also had an employee forum, and we're really proud of that. It was a great experience. People were so thoughtful, and it was small group, and we had an open-ended conversation. So we're just very thankful for people participating, and we're looking forward to doing that again. So what we wanted to do was take that recommendation from the, our county office partner and really look at the three goals aligned to the state priorities in a different way. But we also really felt like they, they were leading with the conditions of learning, and we felt like we really wanted to lead with mental health, with the wellness, and with the engagement of our students and our families. And then second, the student academic success, which of course is important, but we wanted to shake things up a bit. And then lastly, to end with the conditions of learning, which are those basics, the requirements around this teacher credentialing in the facilities and making sure that we're offering a broad course of study to our students. So three goals from eight, from twenty-nine. Now, I know that I love my LCAP, but it is long. The previous version was very long. This one is coming in a little over two hundred pages, but we have a shorter version, and so we've produced this. It's available in English and Spanish. It is in draft form. It will be finalized once the LCAP is finalized. And so we lay out the goals, and we just bullet the actions and services, no dollars, no justification, but just really trying to show people what we're doing at a glance and hopefully enticing them to read the whole document. So you can see that we've invested a lot in that first column. So again, I encourage everyone to take a look at it, and I make edits to it every time a change goes to the LCAP. So we hope that that makes it easy on people to take a look. A brand-new feature of the LCAP that does make it shorter is expenditure tables. And so at the very end, you'll see some expenditure tables, one that has the total expenditures, each of the action items in the LCAP, followed by the dollar amounts and which column it goes to, LCFF, state, local, or federal. And then lastly, the contributing table. So it, all the things that are yes or the LCFF supplemental, that is outlined here as well. So you'll be able to see at a glance those things that we're doing that sometimes are for all kids but are in emphasis primarily to support our media populations. So I mentioned that there are other plans in the LCAP. You may recall, May eighteenth, we took the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan before the board, and so those actions and And so those actions and services are included as well as the dollars and they're listed under other state funds. And then the LCAP federal addendum, those actions and services also included in the LCAP, but I'll be calling them out in another plan next week. Um, and that is, um, the federal titles, one, two, three and four that we've received for years. And so just to bring ourselves up to speed back on that plan and make sure that we're calling out just the federal funds on those programs. And then should we ever have federal program monitoring in the near future, we'll have that approved plan on record. So I just want to remind you that I have these plans and we all really love these plans, but it is actually about the kids. And while most people see that there's a district plan, what they want to know is what's in it for my child and my child's plan, what's in it for my school. And so I want you to know that the district plan informs site plans. I'm in charge of them, so they're very aligned. The site plans are updated annually. I can guarantee it. All sites do have plans. They have a school plan for student achievement and they have a comprehensive safety plan. Plans are reviewed with the school site council at each of the schools. And then school site council and English learner advisor committees provide that site-specific input for the LCAP as well as for their school plan. And then the site plans inform the district plan and the cycle begins again. So it really is a reciprocal and mutual arrangement. And, um, I work to support the schools to make sure that it's as meaningful as possible. But I understand it's a compliance document too, and they really just want to get to serving the kids. So, um, but the plans are available. You can always go to any school site council or ELAC meeting. They're public. So if people want to get involved and see, and they're absolutely encouraged to do so. So on behalf of, uh, Mr. Drake and Dr. Jockum, I just really want to thank you for your time and attention and, um, I hope you read the plan.
Thank you.
This is a phenomenal document. I just want to thank you and all of your staff, you and
There's a staff, there's a, there's a team.
But everybody that works so hard on this. We have gone from gee, someday I'd like to spend this money, maybe we'll have it and if we got it, it would be from here to this document what says. Every dime that comes in is going out and where it's going to help mainly, mainly our sums and fuse, but also our alls. And it was so easy to understand when you use the language, all, some and few. It, it supports our MTSS pyramid. It supports our change in philosophy that we have to remember the all and not just focus on the few. And it, it is a really wonderful document. It takes a long time to read it. But it is worth the read and those of us that are here know that. So I just want to publicly thank you for putting out a document that shows how phenomenal our district is.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. I've read through a lot of it. I still have a bit more to go there. I had some specific questions. Um, but I'll save them for next week. Um, the things that I see that we're doing really, really well are the diversity of our secondary programs. The, um, great opportunities for students to achieve Mandarin, Spanish. We have a lot of really great programs for lower income students for just a broad range of, um, different types of education and opportunities for the future, once they do, students graduate. So I think that's really wonderful. If at some point the board decides that they want to put more resources into some accelerated programs, specifically how we used to have more towards gate. And I know that's a whole fund that we don't have anymore. Um, towards elementary in the future, is that something that we could amend down the road? Is that, would that be a conversation? I know that's not for today because we haven't talked about it at all, but, um, what does, what would that priority look like if that became a priority?
Mm-hmm. So I think, um, it's important to note that the actions and services are not in perpetuity. It's a three-year plan, but it's a really a one-year actions and services. We can add more. We can take away, but what you cannot do is change the metrics. So if we decided to have a new action and service around, um, expanding gate or expanding enrichment, the questions would be, is it for all, some, few? And are we principally serving our, our unduplicated count students? Or are we really just intending to serve all? And that will tell us the appropriate funding source. But absolutely, we can put more into the LCAP. Or if we find that things are not working, we can also after the year discontinue it. We just say why in the annual update.
Thank you. And I don't want to push too much because I feel like we're already doing so much this year and we're doing it really, really well. So thank you. That was just a for future question.
Sounds good.
Hey, trustee Crane.
First of all, thank you to the team for the amazing work. It's, it's a lot. And I do know that these templates are a little pesky to use. So thank you for your patience with that. Um, a couple of questions and a comment. So you, you had mentioned the, the ELO, the expand learning, uh, learning
Opportunities.
Opportunity grant. What was it under? You said, is it under other plans? Funding for it.
So, um, when you're looking at the columns in the expenditure table, it's under state.
Okay.
Funding. If you want to see the, the specific actions and services just for the expanded learning, you would need to go back to the plan that we produced last month.
Okay.
So when you see, um, for instance, we have the, um, the summer programs, the increased improved summer programs. So that's not counting towards the LCFF, but we are including it in our plan. And then you'll see in the expenditures column, it says other state funds.
Okay. For the, for the, uh, public's, um, interest, the ELO is the COVID funds that we received from the state.
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the state COVID funds. And if anyone wants to read that plan, it's on the website just underneath the LCAP.
Okay. And then, um, this is a three-year plan and you did mention in the beginning how because of all of our COVID funding, it is, let's say twenty-one, twenty-two. You're going to be taking out s- some of the, the, how is it going to look? Is it going to be a lot of work? Is it going to be um, less, um, focused on programs or?
Um, so our thinking is that we, we have done things, especially with the expanded learning that we have wanted to do for a long time. And the, the additional funds allowed us to accelerate that vision. So, so for instance, investing in the elementary counselors or, um, these expanded summer programs. Part of it's to address the learning loss and then we're going to see how it goes. So if it's successful, then we do have other funds, for instance, other federal funds that we may tap. Again, evaluating the effectiveness. And so, um, we're hoping that some of these investments are not a one-year thing, but again, we want to make sure that it's working.
Okay. Thank you. Great work.
Justy Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you for this report and all the time that you've spent with all of us too, um, and explaining it. Um, I had a question and I, I know I brought this with you yesterday. Um, I am going through a lot of the stakeholder feedback, um, and knowing that this isn't just an annual update, but the me- the metrics don't change and we're going to be locked in with them for three years. Um, and then also based on some of, Jeff always has such a way with words, you know, and so um, on page twenty-three of our budget, it says the strategic use of funds will ensure the maximization of flexibility, compliance and alignment with student needs and the board's vision. I mean, I think one of the areas, um, for me that I would like to see as a more robust, um, component and possibly, um, as a fourth goal, um, would be family and community involvement. Um, I know that right now, um, goal one is mental health, wellness and engagement. Um, but in looking at the metrics, um, there's not a lot that really is robust in the family and community involvement piece or a lot of dollars that are attached to that. Um, and another component that was mentioned, um, in the budget for, that came out of the governor's, um, may revise was community school expansion. So we know that there, there's actually S R funds or a lot of funds that have come, um, out at the state level. Um, and so I just am wondering if, I, again, I don't, I don't know that we have time because it's very late, you know, it's a very fast turnaround. Um, but I, if we're going to have the next three years where this is our plan and this is what we're dedicating everything to, um, I would really like to see more of a focus on more of a community schools model. And there's four pillars to that. Integrated student supports, expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities, active family and community engagement, collaborative leadership and policies. I mean, I think across the state, a lot of districts are starting to lean towards that as the governor's budget helps to remind us. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there is a possibility to add a fourth goal to separate out mental health and wellness as goal one. And then have a fourth goal of family and community involvement.
So, um, I'm jumping in here, uh, not because Vanessa can't, but she probably won't. And, um, I'm saying that it is late in the game. We are, this, this is, you know, needs to be approved. Um, but we can do whatever the will of the board is in terms of if, if that's what the board's direction is, you know, we can go back and, and amend. The other thing is we could look at it and say, this is where our direction is for this year and next year we can look at as Vanessa was talking about adding different things and putting different things in, even if you don't have it as a specific goal area, it fits under each of the goals, parent engagement, community involvement, all of those fit under each of the goal areas. So we could look at it that way too. So, um, it's, 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 you know, where, where the board directs us, we will, we will follow. Um, but I would say at this point, we've, we've gotten and Vanessa hasn't said anything, but I read through um, the feedback that she got from OCD on it and they fine-tooth comb this thing. Uh, it was like, there was something that go, this isn't exactly verbatim and it says you have to be verbatim from your goals from the prior year. And I was just amazed at the, from OCD's perspective to the, a level of detail and the level of scrutiny that they put into it. But just the level of work that goes into reviewing all of this. So, um, kind of the short, long answer is we, we take our direction from the board on that. So.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, and this might be, um, too philosophical. Vanessa and I have talked about this before. Um, but I'm just curious where, where others stand. Um, the difference between our baselines and our desired outcomes. It seems like many of these desired outcome metrics are based on where we are. It's where we are plus three or where we are plus five. Um, but sometimes I'm curious if we could be a little bit more visionary or aspirational in the kinds of outcomes we'd like to see. Like we may be at fifty-five percent of kids, you know, are at grade level for ELA. Maybe we want it to be seventy-five, but we just keep doing these incremental. Our goal is fifty-eight because we're at fifty-five this year. So I'm just curious if, um, I mean, I've seen a couple other, um, districts LCAPs and they do have slightly more sort of aspirational goals. And we might not meet them and I'm fine with not meeting them. I'm not certain that I'm fine with things being sort of the bar being lower than it needs to be. You know, I'd rather we set the bar higher and work to achieve it. And so things like, for instance, the one that struck me the most was the A through G requirement. So the A through G, um, are expected from this year's, from the, the previous, this LCAP um, was eighty-three percent. We expected eighty-three percent of them to be at A through G, um, requirement. Um, but our actual was sixty-three percent for, for nineteen-twenty. But then I looked at our twenty-one to twenty-four plan and we have our baseline at forty-nine and then our goal for twenty-twenty-four says fifty-five percent. And I thought, well, we've already done sixty-three percent. Why is our goal only fifty-five for twenty-twenty-four? So, um, if we could, you know, where, where did the eighty-three percent go? Can, can that stay our goal? You know, um, to, to just make it a little bit more aspirational and it's okay if we just keep kind of moving toward it. And that's, um, similar to the way I feel about having these separate goals, um, for low-income students. So our, our goals for the low-income students are clearly just based on their actuals, you know, and, and it's so much lower that I, I would like to see the goal for all students just be the goal for all students and you can report to us the low-income versus the average versus ELL. That's fine, but it, it makes me a little sad that we have these goals that say the goal for low-income kids is forty percent, but our goal for everybody else is sixty. So just the, the way that this document could reflect that we have a vision about where we want to go and even if we don't get there, that's okay. But I know a lot of people are scared about setting a goal that we won't meet. But is there, is there a penalty for us to set a goal that we won't meet? Will the state say, no, you can't turn in this plan? Um, so I'm just curious about that and why it's not more of sort of visionary and, and a higher bar for us.
So our targets are our targets and the state does not have a say where we set our targets. And it's really, uh, this is meant to be a local control plan where we make plans together and then we report to our stakeholders what happened. And then how much do we spend and how did it go? So really it is about the, the collective, uh, decision-making and where we want to set targets. So you'll notice some of those targets in there are aspirational. I am going to have to take another look because it sounds like we've got, um, a four-year and five-year cohort pieces mixed in, in there. So I want to make sure that that's not what's going on. Um, so we'll take another look, but really, um, this is the way that we have done it, but that doesn't mean it has to always be that way.
Thank you. Just you again.
I've kind of a question along, um, trustee Ursula's, Lou's, um, question. So as we're looking at the actuals and we see, okay, Hayes, our goal is sixty-five percent and we achieved fifty-eight, which would be, you know, pretty, we'd like to obviously get higher. So how do we take this goal and when do we take this plan and say, oh, look, looks like last year we only achieved this. We need to put more funds over here and kind of flip things. When can we do that through this, this process and our goals to try to, you know, it's clearly that, you know, A through G requirement might need more funding or more eyes on it. Uh, what, how do we pivot? I hate that word. Sorry. Sorry to use it this year. How to change, um, what we, what we're doing to, to, um, help that, that achieve that goal.
Well, essentially that is the whole reason why we have the plan. So that if we're looking at something and we think that we're putting an effort toward, um, uh, an outcome and we're not getting it, then we collectively have to decide what's going on there. Do we need to have more money? Do we need to have different staffing? Do we need to have different curriculum? Do we need to have a different approach? So the whole idea is that this is a living, breathing document. It's just that at this point in statute, there are certain things you have to have, right? So honestly, we're investing in AP and we have AP as a metric, but we all know that AP testing may look different, right? But we're required in statute to have certain elements. So, um, we may prioritize over time, putting things in a different bucket and that's okay. It's really about our process throughout the year and planning and being responsive, gathering the input from the various groups, working with our teachers, working with our bargaining units and really trying to just continuously ask, are we improving? And are we improving in, in the right ways?
So we can modify, we can look at this next year and say, oh, now let's modify and
Not only can we, we will.
So when does that happen?
Well, it's
All the time.
Okay.
Well, I know you went through a process of, you know, asking us and meeting with us and all the stakeholders from the community partners to the PTAs to the D-Lax. So I mean, that's the process. That's when you get your feedback.
Yes.
And of course the data from testing, you know, and all that.
Yes. So, um, timelines have shifted based on when the dashboard would come out or when we would be able to do certain surveys. So moving forward, I think when we have all of our leadership together and we're understanding where we're moving, we'll have to understand when are we going to do thought exchanges and surveys and other community meetings and gathering that input. Typically the cycle starts around January because we have an idea of what funding might look like. You're starting to get some understanding of what's happening in terms of your actions and services. That doesn't mean it has to be that way. But pretty much I could get into high gear in February and then we race until today.
And I think we have a wonderful opportunity because we're going to be changing our, our leadership and if, and with these ideas, it would be nice to hear whomever we are working with to see what their ideas are. So it's a good opportunity.
And Vanessa, you monitor this all year long, so you will report back to us. Things look amiss.
Yes.
I was wondering too, if there's a way, um, for us as part of that process, I was looking, um, at several different districts and there are some that use, um, similarly as, as we do thought exchange but in very different ways. So Santa Ana Unified has their LCAP and it's separated out, which I thought was really interesting and kind of important to have very specific levels. So there was one for elementary principals. There was one for secondary principals. There was one for special ed coordinators. There's each kind of area of staff were able to weigh in on each of their goals. And so their goals were separated out. And then I feel like one of the things that I've seen with some of our thought exchanges is it's like all but one. And it, it's hard to extrapolate and really get fine-tuned information. I mean, I think too for, um, the turnaround time and getting kind of these philosophical conversations, right? There really hasn't been necessarily a time and a place to do that. Um, and so I think if we're having something for three years that we're measuring and our money is attached to it and we are lucky that, you know, we can, we can change, we're not tied to state or federal funding, right? For if we, if we set a benchmark, it, it's not necessarily that we'll get dinged or something negative will happen to us financially. So we have that great opportunity. Um, and so I just, I, I would really love to see, um, if there are just a few other items perhaps that we could tie in then. if there are just a few other items perhaps that we could tie in then that are the metrics that we would be targeting in addition to adding actions and services that would be, you know, some annual things upon discussion. Because I think if, if the board's vision is what is guiding this, but the board never has time to share what their vision is, that's kind of like something that's an issue, I feel like. And then just kind of doesn't get addressed, and it might not be our district alone, but I think, you know, philosophically, we, we don't have an opportunity to have that kind of conversation. I think it's really important.
And, and these are item, all of these, I think they're great comments, and I think it's something as we get a new, new leadership coming in, we'll have conversations about the direction we want to go, and I think we can include all of this, so. But thank you for the presentation. It was wonderful, as usual.
Thank you.
And now we're going to 20B public hearing for the local control and accountability plan. So I am going to open the hearing. And I believe we have no public comments on this. So I am closing the hearing.
Is there one, I think there's one for 20C.
That's not, that's not this hearing, it's another hearing.
Oh, we have many hearings.
We, we are not done yet. Okay, we'll move on to 20C public hearing for 2021 all funds final budget. Mr. Trader. I'll do that, I'll do that after.
Thanks, that's very good to be here with you tonight. So here we are with the all funds June budget. And as you're aware, we have to adopt a budget by June 30th, and we will bring updates to you at first interim and second interim. And right now, in the budget process, the legislature has passed a budget. However, the governor and the legislature are still negotiating. So there's still some, some undone business that needs to happen that will impact us and hopefully in a good way. And we'll cover that here in a minute. So in terms of highlights, the, the governor's budget came out and said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate some of the deferrals, we're gonna leave $2.6 billion out there. And that's important to us because we, that impacts our cash flow. And we are, from a cash flow perspective, we're different than other districts. So we're hoping that the legislative proposal to eliminate all of those, the governor will pick that up. So let's hope he does. Pension support, again, there's no pension support in the governor's budget. And there is pension support in the legislature's proposal. So we hope that the governor will pick that up. That would be very helpful. And then there's universal transit, transition kindergarten. And this would be, this is wonderful, however, there is no funding in that for us. And so we're very concerned about that, and we hope that, that that gets negotiated so we can have funding for that. Otherwise, that's a very large unfunded mandate that we will need to take on. And the governor's budget has it in, by the year 20 324, legislature pushes that back by a year. And then there's the average daily attendance safe harbor. This is good news. We will be funded on the highest ADA from either 1920 or 2021. And so that's the good news for us in terms of our programs that are funded by ADA. And then there's the special education call, that's really good news, 4%, that's amazing. And there's also a continuing early intervention grant. However, that's in the governor's budget. The legislature reduces that somewhat. And so we'll see what happens there with that. This is the continuing early intervention grant is very helpful for us, and we hope that that continues. And then there's the distance learning statutes do expire. We hope that something will happen there, and the unemployment insurance fund, the governor's budget has that increasing from 0.005% to 1.23%. For us, that's $2 million. That is huge, $2 million. The legislature brings that down somewhat to a half a percent. And so we'll see what happens there with that. But hopefully, the, the legislature's option will, or proposal will, will take place. So let's talk about some district factors. We are getting a lot of support for COVID. These, we're getting, this represents here about just shy of $100 million. And with that comes the challenge of keeping the main thing, to keep the main thing, like Superintendent Lee Sung says. And so there's a lot of work in making this strategically maximizing all of these dollars. And, and we're making good progress there. Enrollment is trending down. And you see that we're, we're treating the COVID as an anomaly. And we're hoping that the, we continue then back to our normal trend in the upcoming year. We'll see how that turns out. And then pension rates, pension rates are still a concern. You can see here cowpers and then calsters. And the impact that this is having on our budget, you see here, there's a total cost. And look at 2223, a huge jump in 2223. And that goes from as a percent of budget, we're going to about 10% to over 12% of our budget. That's a big move, and it's going to have an impact on us. And so we hope that there's going to be some additional pension support in the future. And with that, then let's take a look at the summary here. Here's your revenue slide. And this is interesting because this is your property, this is our property tax, and so you see it's very stable, nice incline. That's what we like to see up into the right. We fold in our federal dollars, you can see there's a bump in 2223 just because how the, the cash flow comes to us. And then our state and our other local. So in terms of expense, you can see here, most of our expenses and salaries and benefits takes people to teach people. And, and then, of course, supplies, services, and other. Now, this is probably the most important slide to look at. And this shows your revenue, our revenue line, and then our expense and other uses. And these lines, we work to align them. We cannot have them moving apart. At least we can't have the, the red line above the blue line. And, and we've struggled to make that happen. And we've done a lot of pencil sharpening, and you can see here, we're, we're much more aligned than we have been in the past and going forward. And so this is actually a good thing. And really pleased that that's happening in that way. So we are recommending a positive certification. Let me tell you what that means. There are a number of certifications, we can certify, we can do a positive, we can do a qualified, we do a negative. And qualified says, you know what, we may not be able to meet our, our dissolvent, so to speak, in the next three years. A negative says, you know what, we won't, we will not meet our obligations in the next two years. Positive is, is we will meet our obligations in this year and the next two years. And it's really important to put down a positive certification because there's implications when we don't. And those implicate, implications include the Department of Education coming in, hiring a financial expert, bringing in thick math. It can even mean, it can even mean, you know, where the board doesn't get paid, the superintendent doesn't get paid. It's a big deal. So, and then, of course, it also causes problems with issuing debt. So we always want to have a positive certification. And with that, then, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
We do have a public hearing, and we have one comment. So I'm going to open the hearing, if you could stay. We have one comment, Mrs. Fish.
Thank you, President Yelsey. Wendy Lee, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes. State your name for the record and begin speaking.
Yes, good evening again, trustees. I hope you can hear me, there's a little echo pushback, but I'll be brief. Thank you, Mr. Trader, for that very good presentation, always very clear. My recommend, my request this evening is for two of you, at least, to put on the agenda the discussion of a Newport Mesa Unified School District Finance Committee. I am on the city of Costa Mesa, it's called the FI-PAC, the Financial and Pension Advisory Committee. And we just finished quite a six weeks of really combing through the city's budget. And it was amazing because our little subcommittee made a recommendation to the city that we not go into a $16 million emergency fund. It's a disaster fund, and maybe it's 14 million, I beg your pardon. And it's kind of a sacred cow. And the city manager had recommended using several million of those dollars. But we just couldn't see where that was necessary, and we recommended that she not. And lo and behold, she found ways to cut and to come back with not using it and a balanced budget. Our committee is made up of various members of the community. And I believe it's time that the Newport Mesa School District also has a oversight committee that, that has the opportunity to really look and study the, look at and study the budget and then make, make recommendations, just like we did. And it's, we used to have one years ago. Maybe it was after the embezzlement years and years ago. But I would like two members, two trustees to put it on the agenda. And I don't see why the district would not want to have community members engaged in the financial picture and the budget of the school district. This school district has, has not always been engaging in community in bringing them in, and I'd like to see us do that as we look for a new superintendent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. President Yelsey.
There are no other comments, so I will close the hearing. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for tonight? Thank you, Ms.
Thank you for including to Section 7 back here. I know this is sometimes included in the unaudited actuals, but it's not usually attached in our budget book. So thank you that there's a lot there, and that's really helpful. So I'm, I'm thankful that that is included this time. Thank you.
So welcome.
Thank you, and we will, we will see you again next week. And I encourage any members, if you have any questions on the budget, to contact Mr. Trader over the next week.
I did have a comment. Again, this book is an easy read. When you get to the tables and numbers, it's tables and numbers. But the narration tells anyone who wants to know what kind of a district Newport Mesa is, this is who we are. It explains every school, it explains the demographics, it explains every department in understandable language. And as always, I so appreciate it. And it's, it's, it's pleasant to read, and there's pictures throughout that remind everyone that we're here for children. And I, I, I recommend anyone to read it. It's, if nothing, if you don't go any further, get through the organization, it's, it's really good. Thank you so much, and thank your team.
Thank you.
And especially that you are bringing this with a positive certification, which may sound really simple. But for new board members, if you, I mean, there are districts who are not in that situation. And I don't think we, at least in the long run, have ever been not in positive certification. So I think that we can all be very proud of how our district funds are managed.
Absolutely.
Thank you. 20D public hearing on the Selpa Local Plan Services Plan and Selpa Annual Budget Plan for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Jacob.
Thank you. Good evening again. And I don't know if you want to do the public hearing and then have me talk about it when you do the adoption.
I can do it, I can do the public hearing because I believe we have no comments. So I will open the public hearing, but unless I am told otherwise, we have no public comments. So I will close the public hearing. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So I stand before you tonight with the Selpa Annual Services and Annual Budget Plan. And in piggybacking on what Ms. Daly was talking about, this is really what we're talking about for the few students, and these are students who are in special education. The Selpa Local Plan is a requirement of every Selpa throughout California, both multi-district Selpas and single-district Selpas. I have been a Selpa director in both. The local plan means it, it's very different in a multi-district Selpa when you have several districts who are sharing finances and sharing programs. As a single-district Selpa, we provide all of the services to our students, or we do contracts with non-public schools or agencies, and if we're not able to do that. So it's more of a routine matter in a single-district Selpa. With that said, we did have the opportunity to meet with our community advisory committee and have discussions with them over the budget plan. Mr. Trader and his staff come and present on the, where, where the special ed dollars fit into the district's budget plan. And, and then we also talked about the service plan. We do have two trustees who sit as participants within our community advisory committee, and that's Trustees Matoie and Trustee Crane. And in this, I found trustee Matoie's love, which is reading through a document and, and pointing out, you know, where it doesn't make sense. I, I need that because sometimes, you know, when, when you look at a document over time, you become fatigued, and you can't see the errors in it, or you can't see something that doesn't make sense. So I really do appreciate the time that you spent to go through that, and we made changes accordingly. So the Annual Services Plan, what that does is it provides just an opportunity to put out to the public what services we provide at which of our schools currently. It's a snapshot in time, knowing that at any time, if we have students who move in with specific needs, those services could change at any time. But it's, it's an assurance to the public, to the community, and to the board that we, you know, stand ready to serve the students within Newport Mesa and all of their special education needs. So I would ask approval, adoption of the Annual Services and Annual Budget Plan for the Selpa for this coming year.
So moved. Well, there we go.
Second. And this is when we're taking action on tonight, not next. So I will move to 20E, approved the Selpa Local Control Plan and Selpa Annual Budget Plan for the 2021-2022 school year. Moved by trustee Matoie, seconded by trustee Crane. And we have a, any other questions or roll call vote?
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoie.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane. Trustee Ursula.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
And it, it may seem to the public, although there's not a, a lot of public members watching tonight, but it may seem that we have a lot pushed into this meeting. And that's because we have to make approvals of certain things, budgetary LCAP in June. And that is why we will see you again next week because we have our other regularly scheduled June meeting next week to make the final improvement, approval for the LCAP and the budget. So jam packed agenda, but thank you all. We know. So jam-packed agenda, but thank you all. We know how much work went into every single plan and report and budget that you've put together. And we truly appreciate each and every one of you and your departments for helping get this down. And now we'll move on to informal reports.
Okay. I passed at this point because I gave a report earlier, but I have a couple more things to add. First of all, I forgot to mention, and I don't want this to be not noticed. Okay. We went through quite a process to have an early start calendar this year. And I think through all the COVID stuff, that has really gotten overlooked. Where the board had committed for all the benefits that we saw primarily for secondary students. And we started the year earlier than we have before, what is that, Labor Day? And and then therefore we ended the year earlier. But the most significant part of that was the fact that our students were able to finish first semester before winter break. And we heard from our student board members that that was actually a very welcome thing. They needed a break more than ever this year. And so, you know, we finished the the year last week, which normally we'd still be in school for another two more weeks. And so I don't want that to be unnoticed. And I think it was very, very important that we did that. We're in greater alignment to the colleges and universities. So you notice, we didn't hear these stories of students and panicked parents that we can't get our transcripts in time. Where my child can't go to the university. You know, summary events because they're still in in high school. So I just want to note that we did a very good thing. And this is the first year that we did that. And I believe it was very successful. And, you know, again, thank you to Leona Olson and, you know, working with our unions to reach that agreement. And so I didn't want that to go unnoticed. And I almost forgot that. Okay. And then the the second thing is just how impressed I am, continue to be impressed with the staff here at Newport Mesa. And I think tonight's meeting is a good example of the work that's being done with all of these plans. And even though Vanessa and Jeff are the lead and kind of the face of both of these things, there's a lot of people and a lot of work that goes on in a lot of settings to make this happen. I, you know, do want to thank the two of them and everybody that supports them and were involved in the process. And just, just again, a very proud moment for me to sit here and to watch all of this play out. And more importantly, how it impacts kids in our schools and in our classrooms. So I just want to end with that.
And and I have to tell you why you were talking about the collegiate calendar and everything that's gone on. Our student board member Paulina was sitting there, not even approval that she agreed. So from a student's point of view, they're happy with this as well. Ms. Olson? Dr. Jacom? No reports? Mr. Trader? Wow. Come on up.
I just wanted to emphasize and think of Vanessa, you know, this alignment, the, I say the budget alignment to the LCAP does not happen by accident. There is a lot of effort that goes in there. And and we, we are working tighter than we ever have to to make that happen. And it's a, it's a great thing. I'm reminded, you know, of trustee Ursula's, you know, encouragement. It's better to, how do you say, shoot for the moon and miss it by a little than to aim for the gutter and nail it. Really do have the pedal to the metal. When I was looking at the numbers, your expenditure increase year over year is eight percent. It's a, it's a, there's a lot going on. So thank you.
Thank you. That was his interpretation of your.
That was way more eloquent than.
Oh, Dr. Maboister? Okay. I can't see behind. There's like a line here.
I have a report that I know our superintendent is very interested in. I'm sure you will be as well, but it's our sports wrap-up. So I have our CIF champions and runner-ups. And we still, on June fifteenth, have two teams still competing. So at Crondo Mar High School, their girls swim team were CIF champions. Their girls lacrosse team, CIF champions. Their boys golf team was a CIF runner-up. Boys wrestling was a CIF runner-up. And boys volleyball were CIF champions and ended up being a semifinalist in the, in the state Southern Regional Tournament. Costa Mesa Boys Basketball was a CIF runner-up and are still competing in the regional tournament. Astancia, while they didn't have any team championships, they did have a number of individuals that competed in the finals in golf and tennis and track and fair with you, the one was now, they didn't write it down. Newport Harbor High School, their boys volleyball team were CIF runner-ups. And the girls basketball team, CIF championship for the first time in ninety years at that school. And they are continuing on in the regionals as well. And so those are our CIF champions and runner-ups, quite a, quite an impressive list. And again, thank you for your support of our athletic teams and getting them out on the field that they just had a great time and were able to do things they never thought they were going to get a chance to do this year. So thank you for your support.
Could you? Thank you for that. And it was, it was really exciting. And Girls Lacrosse at CDM, that was the first time they've ever won the championship.
Could you send us that in writing? Because I couldn't write as fast as our good kids did good things. Thank you.
That's exciting. And do we still, we still have people competing in track? Are there some kids still in track? Okay. Board reports, anybody?
I am sorry, but I do have a board. We had our Costa Mesa Sports Council meeting. And a couple things of note were that the city of Costa Mesa has twenty new portable light towers now so that our schools, if we need them at night, summertime, it's not so important. It stays late till the kids are done playing. But in the winter, they now have more available to them to borrow their, you know, that's a search situation. And the Chargers are going to be back at Jim Hammett Field. Jack, I'm at the farm. I really want to keep saying it's at the farm. And they are going to be there. This is critical for us between July twenty-eighth and August twentieth. Which means it'll be during when our teachers are returning, but not necessarily when the kids are back. So that's a close time. And that the Norma Herzog Community Center, which is what the old library used to be, is coming soon. It's almost finished. And for us, what that means is another large venue for us to get together when we can get together in large venues. And also the OCC Student Union Building has a large venue room also. So those, while those are not having to do with sports, the city responded, reported that to us. And my other report was that I, via Delegate Assembly for Cal's Orange County School Boards Association, I was able to speak with Senator Min last week and brought to his attention the fiscal impact of transitional kindergarten while on basic aid districts. And while we think transitional kindergarten is phenomenal, we would appreciate it if they would take that funding out of the Gen LCF Prop ninety-eight and make it a separate category of funding because then we can access it. And then it will be a wonderful thing for us because well, it won't take away from any other programs that we have and we could just grow and have. So we got to share that with him. And we also thanked him. We thanked him for supporting the unemployment insurance and all those things that you were saying. I was able to get that message directly to Senator Min and Assemblyman, Woman, Cotty Petry Norris was already on board with those. So I wanted to report that. We've got two legislators in Orange County ready to support that. And I'm done.
Barto, would you like to do a crop report?
I will do just a super short one because our meeting is actually later this week. So next week I'll have a better report with more updates. But I did want to congratulate, unfortunately, our student board member left. But Brittany and her team at Astancia, they're engineering the scholarships for ROP. They did singularly well. And so their school will be, their students will be receiving the bulk of the Hoz scholarships for engineering students for ROP.
Cool. And Delac, would someone or all of you like to comment on that?
No, you do it. No, you do it.
My brain is fried. It's after my bed. Yeah, it was a great, they had the end of the year kind of gathering, which usually is food and so much fun. And so it's all sad to do over Zoom. But yeah, it was just a great time of of kind of remembering how far things have come, have come this year. And just reiterating how many community supports are in place for people. And I feel like right now there's a synergy around particularly with having so many new facilitators that are coming in with new and fresh ideas. So it's been really kind of invigorating. Some of the parents tell her more about more options. Yep, it was great.
And student superintendent advisory, would you like to do that?
Yeah, I think the focus was mostly on graduation and end of the year for seniors. The ASB directors were very focused on that. And that's pretty much it, wasn't it?
I think they also were looking at for the second time into counselors. They were talking some about counselors and would like to have more access in general to counselors across the district. And I think that's something we'll be looking into. And
I would like to report the fact that this, these last few weeks have been amazing, just trying, just going back to the sites and and witnessing and celebrating the students of our district and the teachers through the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation. I believe all of us trustees participated in the the grant award programs where we went to the sites and we got to meet the teachers that were innovative and received thousands of dollars from the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation. That was absolutely amazing, just going to the sites and and just meeting these amazing dedicated teachers that are our superstars. And of course, all the promotions and graduations, it was just wonderful being a new trustee and just seeing, seeing this from this lens of just, you know, being at these ceremonies with almost the best seat in the house, just seeing all these kids' expressions and their pride in their work. And the fact they've, they've completed and achieved, you know, their years of and are moving on. And I intended the step graduation, and that was absolutely special. And that was really wonderful to see how loved these kids are. Those are the ones that we, we, we have till they're twenty-two and then they move on. And the staff is a family. They're truly a big family. They're so proud of the kids that are moving on. So just very proud of the work that we're all doing. And just seeing the student board members today, just, you know, expressing candidly. You know, we don't coach these kids. They come here and they speak from the heart. And that's just right there says it all. Thank you for everyone's hard work. Proud to be a trustee in this district.
And it was a very unique year. And and I think we all saw, because we all were at graduations, multiple graduations, that I think the biggest applause was when a principal might get up and say, it's so nice to be here in person.
Yes.
And everybody was just thrilled for that. And I think everyone in this room and in the district should be so proud that we made that happen. And it sounds like such a simple thing. And in normal year, it is a simple thing. But it wasn't this year. And I think everybody appreciated that. And when I listened to the graduating class and speeches or just talking to them, they really felt that they had a good year. I mean, I think we took this more.
Yes.
More with more difficulty than they did. They, they just adapted to the situation, whether they were on Zoom or at home or came back part-time or full-time. They obviously were pleased to all be there at the end full-time. But they feel like they had a successful year. And I think that that made me feel really good to to hear that from them.
Follow-up question. I don't know if we have any more reports. I've, I've been asked a few times about the facilities. And I was just wondering with the new, I know there wasn't really dramatic OSHA changes, but is, is there any possibility for summer for a change or an opening for facilities use?
Yes, absolutely. We're going to be looking at all of that under the new guidance. And obviously, our focus first is on our own school programs before we start opening up for outside community use. And we had a nice meeting with our city of Newport Beach yesterday. They had asked the same question. We assured them that we'd be looking at that as well.
Yeah, because I know that the OSHA guidance was not as robust as we would have wanted. So.
Hopefully that guidance will be coming relatively soon from.
Great, thank you.
Okay, if there are no further comments, questions, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
By trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Wagen. No one wants to leave. All in favor. Okay, have a nice week and we will be back again in one week.